Okay, are we ready?
Yep.
Okay. Mayor Protem, I guess we'll call the meeting to order. And Jane, can we get a roll call?
Shaven.
Here.
Kroger.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Rudolph.
Here.
Blatt is with us electronically. Councilmember Blatt.
I do see he is muted, but I've asked him to unmute. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Greg, are you here?
I am here.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. Everybody has received the agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Gina, second by Peterson.
All right.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye, and I will abstain from two A and B on those.
And Rudolph?
Aye.
And that was our conflict of interest, is that correct?
That was the agenda, but the conflict of interest is Jay's.
Okay, awesome. So first item of new business is to accept the resignation from Jay Christensen, council member for Ward 1, effective April 5th, 2022, which would be today. So we've all received a written resignation from Jay in our packet. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Thanks for your years of service.
You're welcome.
Good luck in your future endeavors.
I'll need it.
And motion.
Any other questions? Otherwise, will someone motion to accept the resignation for Jay?
Someone?
Motion by Shaven, second by Gina.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Okay, so with that, the next item of business would be to appoint Jay Christensen as mayor to fill the role of Mike Colby through, it's November 23?
December 31st of '23.
Thank you, Jane.
If I may, Sharon, I'd just like to offer, just for those that are listening in or maybe re-listening to this, as previously been stated, there's a very prescriptive process in state code when a position becomes available, so we have followed those steps. Notice was published, and that's what's got us to this point today, to consider this appointment.
Perfect. I just appreciate Jay's interest in moving forward as mayor of Harlan. He's going to do a fabulous job.
Well, I appreciate the encouragement from a few members of this group, so.
And if there's no other questions, I will make the motion to appoint Jay Christensen as mayor.
Second.
And roll call. Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Thank you.
So Jane, I understand that you will administer oath of office.
Yes.
Do we have any oath? There's our photographer.
Please raise your right hand. I, Jay Christensen.
Hi, Jay Christensen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of mayor.
Discharge all the duties of the office of mayor.
In the city of Harlan, Iowa.
In the city of Harlan, Iowa.
As now or here and after required by law.
As now or here and after required by law.
Yay!
I'll get you signed after the meeting.
Okay.
And so now, Mr. Jay, honor. Use your hair.
Where I'm sitting.
Get a little better over here, you're centering.
Thank you. Well, thank you.
Meeting's all yours.
Yay!
And I just want to express, you know, we've done it before, express the appreciation to Mike. He's done a great job doing what he's done the last few years as city council and now the mayor, and on to what he's going to try and do in the near future, so. So then we will move on to, in the new business D, consider the filling of council seat, Ward 1, by appointment of published public notice, the intent to appoint. Jane, do you want to address this, kind of the process?
Yes.
Fill my spot.
Yes, so the public notice will be published in the newspaper, and it states that the resignation of Jay is effective today, and the council proposes to fill the vacancy by appointment. And as we did with the mayor position, we have the guidelines, as Jane spoke to, that we have to follow with Iowa code, that anyone interested, a Harlan resident who resides in Ward 1 in the city of Harlan, is an eligible elector and is interested in filling this vacancy, can fill out a form of consideration, which will be available on the city website or here at City Hall. And it's just a one-page consideration for appointment. And those were asking, they be returned by May 9th, and the council will address that appointment on the second meeting in May, the 17th of May, at our 5:15 meeting to make that appointment. That term of the council member, Ward 1, will hold that position through December 31st of 2023, and that election will be held in November of '23. At that time, that seat will be to fill a vacancy. And so that will be two years in that role. Jane's got the map.
Essentially, the northeast quadrant of town generally, as well as then, here's the sample of the consideration form. It's a simple, one-page, not too complex, but to provide some background of someone's qualifications and interests. And as we had previously discussed with the mayor position, if there's more than one individual expressing interest, then it will be at the pleasure of councils to how you may want to consider those applicants, what has been done in the past, and what we may suggest is a work session, for example. If you've got two or three interested candidates, possibly host a work session in which you can provide questions and interaction with them, so that whatever recommendation you'd like to make at that main meeting would be with consideration of that. We'll call it a mini-interview or mini-meet and greet.
So we need a motion then, to start that process then, Jane?
Correct.
I think you got motion.
Motion by Kroger, and second by Shaven. Roll call.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Thank you.
Then, moving on to consent agenda, I think we've all received that. This is all taken care of with one motion. Minutes of the March 15th, 2022 council meeting. Claims list number 1263, the amount of $159,303.44. And in that, there were a few items. I don't know if anybody saw those, some larger ticket items, but I think they're all part of our budget process. Renewal application, Old West Side Lounge LTD, Class C liquor license, outside service and Sunday service. Renewal application for Gussie Dove Cocktail Lounge LLC, Class C liquor license and Sunday service. Anybody have any questions or concerns?
I would just like to make one note, in that, as you see in the claims list, that the wastewater treatment plant did get their pickup from Carl Chevrolet, and they're a state bid site, so they follow the state bidding rules, and that was budgeted for. But they're happy to have received that.
Anything else, anybody? Is there a motion for consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Peterson.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt. Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Well, that's going to pick up the pace. Forty times you're going to have to improve. Under other business, Resolution 2483, to authorize preparation of plans, applications, bid documents, and set public hearing for Tuesday, April 19th, 2022, at 5:15, City Hall, council chambers, for 2022 City Hall parking lot improvements project. You sharing?
I just handed out the spec book, as well as on the back of the spec book. This is for the City Hall parking lot, which you previously approved. Snyder and Associates prepared these plans and specs. The simple highlight, the map is in your packet. But just to review, this will direct us to advertise and open bids the day before the next meeting, and report on bids at the 19th meeting. And this is a project that's been needed for a long time. So the crosshatch area, so in the, yeah, the back of the plans, it's page two, I just gave one highlight, it is a, instead of a full replacement of all the PCC, which would be probably two and a half times the cost, which we are looking at a modified, so all the crosshatch area on the north here, you can assume this is on, this is right up, butts up against the building. And then all the center, so that would be full removal and replacement with seven inches of PCC, the entire center. Great base there, yeah, there's some busted up concrete, yet the intent is to take off the concrete on the most busted up areas, and those closest to the building. And then the center area will then come in with three inches of asphalt overlay. So we believe the maintenance, excuse me, the life on that will be 15, 20 years, and it'll be in a future street improvement project, 15, 20 years out, you can just come in and do the center with new asphalt, which is going to be significantly less cost for any future maintenance. Any questions on that? That's the highlights of, and again, it's a 73-page spec packet, consistent. We will be sending it to local contractors, well, it's been posted through the plan rooms and league website. The project's been on the docket, and we, and if you spent time on a parking lot, you realize the need that has been there.
Anybody have any questions?
So this will direct us to advertise and then do final approval, we spend specs and plans, and receive bids on the 19th.
So is there a motion for Resolution 2483?
Motion.
Motion by Peterson, and second by Shaven.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, to receive and file the minutes for the March 30th, 2022 Airport Commission meeting, and review bids received for the taxi lane project. Does it need a motion to receive those minutes?
Yes, and then we can expand on that, yeah, listen, the minutes are in your packet, and then we can expand on that with the resolution that's being introduced.
All motion to receive and file. Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Rudolph.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
And then out of that comes Resolution 2484, making the award of contract to Bluffs Paving and Utility for $551,901.63 for the 2022 Airport Taxi Lane Improvement Project,
You read off almost like you were a pilot or something.
I skipped a couple zeros. And I think we've got some folks on the line if we have questions that want to help Jane or address any of this, so.
Just to do a quick recap, and as the mayor alluded to, we have Eric Johnston and Corey Gaston from Kirk and Michael, who have worked at our airport for 20-plus years, and so they're available for questions as well. These plans and specs have been previously approved by you. This is another of the capital improvement projects that are slated, have been slated on the CIP plan at the airport. This is specific to, we did a Phase 1 and an alternate bid, Phase 2 with this project. Bids were opened, and we did receive two bidders, Bluffs Paving and Precision Concrete Services, those bid tabs are in your packet. Just to, so you're aware of what, of course, I should have written the page number down.
Thirty.
There we go, if you really want to squint, but this was the bid tabulation sheet. Columns 1 and 2 was the engineer's estimate. Columns 3 and 4 represent quantity and total for precision. The next two columns were Bluffs Paving unit cost in total. The top portion was the base bid, and the bottom portion was the alternate Phase 2, which again, we could accomplish more in one year. And the combined total for Bluffs Paving was $551,901.63. The combined total for precision was $542,662.50. The engineer's estimate was $493,990.10. And approximately 10% was within engineer's estimate, and from prices that have been out there, and there's been significant variation across many areas, but pavement and asphalt included, so within 10%, we were quite pleased with. And through discussion and evaluation with the Airport Commission, their recommendation was to go with Bluffs Paving, as they, even though they're slightly higher, is that they met all the requirements of the bid packet in terms of DBE, which is disadvantaged business enterprise, and they've met or exceeded that, which is a requirement with the FAA, and that's the recommendation, and they're within $9,000. So that's some background. Eric, any, or, any you want to add to that, Eric?
No, well done, Jane, and good evening, everyone, and thanks for having us on real quick. The only thing I would just like to add to that, Jane, would be that FAA has approved all these items, and of course, this is our standard 90-10 funding ratio, where the Federal Aviation Administration pays 90% of all the eligible costs. And, yeah, they have got, and if the council approves this tonight, the grant application goes in tomorrow, which Jane and Jane will send off. So I guess everything from our perspective looks good. Like Jane says, obviously, we're in a very different time in the contractor's bidding world, due to a lot of different factors, and material shortages, labor shortages that we see, so. So that's all I had to add, Gee.
Thanks for those additional reminders, I guess, and.
Yeah, no problem.
Again, this was also those, the Airport Commission members that, really, the eyes and ears and have the oversight there, but this does need your approval before going to the FAA. Any questions or any other ideas you'd like to?
I got something. Am I allowed to speak on?
Sure. You want to stand and make up here and tell us who you are?
Sure.
I'm the owner of Bluffs Paving, and I was just curious, you guys are awarding both the base and the additional?
Yes, that is a recommendation from the FAA, assuming there are currents. Anything you would add to that, Eric?
Oh, that's exactly right.
Okay, awesome, cool, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thanks for coming on.
I was just going to ask if we've ever used them before, so.
We have not directly, but others have.
Very good.
Yeah.
Awesome, thanks.
Yes, and thank you.
So we have a motion for Resolution 2484.
Salute. Second.
Motion by Shaven, second by Peterson.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item D, receiving and filing the minutes of.
Thank you, everyone.
Yep, thanks for joining in, guys.
You're always welcome to hang on, but I know you probably have more exciting things tonight. Thank you both.
Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
You as well.
You too.
Receiving and filing the minutes of the 2025-22 Harlan Historic Preservation Commission meeting.
I would make that motion.
Sorry? Motion by Kroger, second by Peterson with enthusiasm.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then out of that, yeah, I guess we have to approve then. Is this not a resolution, or it's just comes out of that meeting, we're just going to approve that?
No, it's just the recommendation of the six applications.
I think we had seven, and one dropped out, so we have six that we need to approve. And I'm a part of that, so we need to approve the recommendation from HHPC for the approval of six applications, the downtown facade and upper story grants. Jane, if you want to address anybody, questions, I'm looking at those, I guess, they did come in below the, we allowed $50,000 through the, our budget through City Council, and it's $47,000 something, I guess.
Yep, have that up in front of you.
I'm excited, we still have interest.
Yeah, definitely interest.
And as the mayor alluded to, yes, so you'll see seven on this list, and one did drop out after we spoke with them, and this happened last year, we had more requests than, and in the guidelines, if there's more requests than there are funds, it would then be prorated, yet if someone voluntarily decides to drop out, so it releases more funds to others. And in this case, this happening had a couple of properties. So, and as the mayor alluded to, then what has been budgeted, at least out of city match, has been $50,000, and this came in at $47,000. And some great exchange and back and forth. Julie Erickson from city staff has been excellent working with these owners and getting everything clarified and back to the commission. Was in a meeting just after lunch today with some guests from out of town in central Iowa, and been a number of years, they'd said, since they've been in Harlan, they had lunch down at the Victoria Station, and the first things they said to myself and a few others, wow, your downtown is phenomenal. And it's due to a lot of efforts, right? You know, from CDBG to ongoing city match with upper story facade, Pride, so just those things we take for granted, we experience it every day, but then having those comments just, I believe, further reinforces what council has supported with this type of program.
Yeah, I think every time we go through that process at the commission, we kind of learn, we kind of want to fine-tune it maybe a little bit, so next week we might have them come in and talk to us, people that apply, because we had some questions, and then, you know, Julie, you know, bless her heart, she went back and talked to them, and from feedback we got, my, I understood, they were all very agreeable to answer the questions, and one of them did adjust one of the bids, because we had some questions about maybe changing it from size of a window, whatever, and they did it, and, you know, it's been a good process. So I guess I look for a motion to approve those six applications.
A motion.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to E, Resolution 2485, of local support of the community garden program. This is something we've had in the past, correct?
It is correct.
It's ongoing.
This is an item we've done each year. We've demonstrated council support and ongoing support for use of public property for this effort. That's why it's in front of you. Question that certainly in these times, and with our water conservation, water watch conditions, well, what about water for the community garden? So that was discussed with HMU board at their last meeting, and the guidelines for the gardeners will be identical to last year. They're under the same guidance as any other gardener or homeowner in the city. And Iowa State Extension, who has been our partner with signups and education, met with them last week, and they're fully aware of the guidelines as well, because they've had questions from a few gardeners as well, yet. And again, this would just be across the street from Hanson House, the same two lots, and would be up to 18 plots for community gardeners. And the last number of years, we've had all 18 plots spoken for rather quickly, so.
And they can do that online, is that correct?
No, they need to contact Iowa State Extension to complete that.
And they could call here and find out, I guess people who've done it kind of know what the process is.
High issue has taken over the registration part of it, so.
Through their efforts, and some of the ads they place, that, I don't know that many come through City Hall, but they're still going to redirect them. And a great partnership.
Okay, now, motion for Resolution 2485.
Motion.
Motion by Kroger, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Item F is Resolution 2486, set a public hearing for Tuesday, April 19th, 2022, at 5:15, City Hall, chambers for application, with USDA Rural Development for Financial Assistance for the Veterans Auditorium Facade Improvements. I'm going to let Jane talk about this one, this is Jane doing Jane things, so.
So there's some money available through USDA Rural Development and for facade improvements, city-owned facade improvements, and our Veterans Auditorium has been in need of some facelift work. There's some items that are deteriorating that our manager has brought to our attention and would like to make some improvements. And we discussed this with the administrators of this grant, and it would qualify, so we would like to make an application for those improvements. $135,000 is what would be applied for. It's a 65-35 match, so the city would be responsible for $87,750, and USDA would cover the $47,250. And so this resolution would set a public hearing for this, and that would be posted in the newspaper, and then the next item, and just to cover it also, but the next resolution that you'll be approving is actually to apply for financial assistance. So the money, it goes quickly, and so for essence of time, they've asked that both of these resolutions be approved at this council meeting, and then our public hearing will be on the 19th, and if for some reason, the council or public or someone doesn't want to go through with this application, we can pull it at that time, so.
As you may recall, this was similar to what we've done with the street project, as well as with mowers and.
Emergency equipment.
The loader and snowblower, so similar funding stream. The loader and snow blower, so similar funding stream, which we qualify for. Again, Jane and the team, who's been phenomenal, developed some great rapport with USDA, so. Similar process.
Any other questions about what this is? And I just didn't see no timing of it, but I understand it's first come, first served, and so, so we have a motion to approve resolution twenty-four eighty-six.
Motion.
Motion by Kroger, second by Shabon.
Roll call Shabon.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
And then the next one, next she said, goes with the one we just did, resolution twenty-four eighty-seven, to apply for the financial assistance to USDA Rural Development of Veterans Auditorium Facade Improvements.
And that was this app, the application itself in your packet, which, and which Jane highlighted the, there's the funding side of it, the forty-seven eighty-seven, and again, the city component, if you've heard this term before, capital savings accounts, so this relates to knowing that there are going to be improvements, and that's what this has been saved for is capital improvements at the facility.
I would make the motion to approve the application for financial assistance.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Rudolph.
Roll call Shabon.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Thank you.
H is review the application for street closing with Shelby County Historical Museum for June fifth, twenty-twenty-two for log cabin days. I think that was in the packet, Torres, the people that checked off, who needed to check off and approve, and
Yes.
This, we did the same thing, I guess, in last year, previous years, so. Anybody have any questions or concerns about that one?
We've not had any issues historically.
Talk about the back end. Someone want to make that motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, and second by Peterson, because it's been kind of quiet on this side right here.
Roll call Shabon.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
I'm just going to say, I'm having a hard time not hearing Christiansen in voting, so.
Hard time not saying it.
Hard time pointing the direction without responding. It's going to take a little bit. I would be resolution twenty-four eighty-eight to authorize the signing of warrants.
With
Jane, what should we talk about that one?
With our new mayor, this has, this is a requirement that needs to be changed, resolution for us, and also a resolution with Shelby County State Bank. They require their own resolution in which Mayor Colby will come off of that signature, and, and Mayor Christiansen will be listed as mayor instead of council member. And there are other council members, Sharon Kroger, Gina Rudolph, myself, and in my absence, Julie Erickson, that are also going to be signers of our warrants, our checks. As you remember, we require a second signature for any check that is written over two thousand five hundred dollars, so.
Anybody have any questions about that? Motion for resolution twenty-four eighty-eight.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Shabon.
Roll call Shabon.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Now, we're down to other reports, city administrator, Gene.
Yes, first and foremost, welcome Jay to your new seat. And again, also extend appreciation to Mayor Colby for his service and commitment over the last number of years between council and mayor, and just listening to you lead the meeting already tonight, Jay, I think you're going to do a great job, so I believe. And also thanks to all of you for, it's certainly been a pleasure working with you in your elected roles, and some, we learned through municipal leadership academies as far as the power of teamwork, and it's, it's a team here, and doesn't mean you always have to agree, but you can respectfully disagree. And I just, I know Jane and I have taken a lot of pride in working with elected officials, and I see that some continuity here, so again, welcome, Jay, and
Thank you.
Certainly know you've already got a great team supporting you. But a handful of updates here. Sharon mentioned, and this may have been what you're referencing, Sharon, as far as online, so the pool, swimming pool, it's getting to be that time of year, although I don't think we'd want to dive off the board today, that with, we were in front of H, made a request with HMU to move pool use and pool refill with water to tier two. With that, it certainly gave a green light to proceed with things that need to operationally start happening now for the pool. And I will also comment for you and the public that we do continue to correspond with Iowa Department of Public Health in regards to relooking at that waiver process, if we needed to have another backup in terms of being able to use discharge water like was done last year. So that, that path continues as well. Yet happy to report that the park board had voted, had motion previously that the month of April would be a sign up. And so sign up started last Friday morning, which was April first, no fooling on that. And within the first hour, and I reported this out to a few of you, there were over fifty within the first hour between lessons and passes. And as of this morning, there's close to seventy now, with a hundred and eleven swim lessons signed up for. Kudos to the team that they've now further automated swim lesson signups online, so more self-serve, doesn't require someone to come in the office, and just, you know, hats off to the staff and team for taking advantage of, utilizing those tools that are available. And certainly, I want to the public that if you have questions, comments, or need support with using those tools, you know, definitely call City Hall, and the team will help you through that. So update there, and so all systems are go at this point with a pool, as well as sign up, a lot of activity. Just a look on the screen related to another item. It's been an initiative over the last few years that our two providers, Windstream and MediaCom, with us and HMU to remove items from the pole, their infrastructure from the poles, and it's been painstaking at times, yet through filing some municipal infractions with them, it's certainly got their attention. So just for your awareness, the public, Windstream has submitted their plans. We had a pre-construction meeting out in the field earlier this, or just yesterday, and they will start on Exchange Street, so this would be in the items one through eleven, one through twelve here. So on this map will be the areas that they'll be moving their infrastructure from poles and boring. So again, some, some minor disruption, but it will further get their facilities underground and allow more poles to be taken down. So just to see activity in a few areas, certainly in starting an exchange with Windstream, and they'll be starting, gosh, this week or next, and their target is by the end of May. So something that's been delayed for two years, and we're making progress there. So as you can see this activity, and again, it's the exchange area, Gate Street, a little bit off of Twelfth, between College and Lincoln, so there's five areas there that is further removal from poles. As commented on the last HMU board meeting, and I wanted to report to you that the, with the water, raw water improvements on the well fields, as well as the four new wells for our HMU water supply or system, that obviously that's in a floodplain, right, adjacent to the Nishna Batna. Under our local ordinance, we are the floodplain manager. Yours truly here that you're looking at is designated as our floodplain manager, and we have certain steps and due diligence we have to complete, even to approve any activity in those areas, including HMU's activity, and that has been reviewed and approved and received concurrence with the DNR. So as Agent has reported, and Ken has reported, that all, all systems are go there, and we have properly permitted that as a local jurisdiction as well. Happy to spend a lot more time there, but don't need to, if you have any questions, the public does, please contact me. Jane commented on that the wastewater plant, so our truck purchase, many, many supplies, equipment, and the pickup was one of those that was not able to be delivered locally, so it had been back, or just couldn't get a production date or delivery date, so we had to go with another, another provider under state bid, so that was budgeted, and we now have that. Reported at the airport last week that there was a soup fly-in, so they had a spring soup fly-in, and that was over sixty people, thirty-five planes with that soup fly-in. And just reviewing some of the fuel purchases, that was, this was the most active, excuse me, the most fuel sales in any March in the last six years. Sign even contributed with that fly-in, but it generates fuel sales, generates activity at the airport, show out the updates, so a lot of positive activity out there. In your packet also was the
Still there's thunder.
I think he was trying to, yeah, he's still on that timer too.
Yeah.
In your packet was also the apron rehab pre-construction meeting, that was last year's capital improvement project, which is now starting construction. There were, gosh, close to fifteen individuals out at the pre-construction meeting last week, contractor, subs, and that activity will start next Monday, and that's a forty-day contract, forty working days, and for phase one, the airport will still be open, yet for phase two, the airport will be closed, hold a number of safety requirements, but see some activity or inactivity out there is due to that apron rehab, which was the project that was funded last year. And my last couple items, April fifteenth is the Community Service Day with the school, and we historically provide support with trash bags and help as yard erects and other refuse that we partner with the students to collect those items and remove those items. So that's April fifteenth, and I know that the NHS and schools had publications in the paper, if anyone's interested, who to call if someone wants some spring cleanup or help on their property due to that youth Community Service Day. This is National Library Week. This Friday is an ambassador visit at the library with our library, Amanda Brewer is the director and our rock star team there, wonderful programs, children, adults, and this is National Library Week, and we have a wonderful library that just keeps knocking out of park, in my opinion. So show your thanks and appreciation to our local library, and there's an open house ambassador visit Friday at ten. And lastly, we'd like to welcome two new team members. Doug Harms started at our wastewater plant as a mechanic operator a few weeks ago. Been a wealth of new ideas and fresh, fresh ideas, as I understand. And then also welcome to a new officer, and we'll have some more introduction with us, but Casey, not even going to attempt the last name until I get more guidance with it.
Presomley.
Presomley. Casey joined us a few weeks ago. He's a certified officer, previously at Air Police Department, so he comes with us with three or four years of certified experience, and has hit the ground running here. We'll have further interactions with that, but wanted to share those names and welcome them to our team. And welcome, any questions or comments from you?
Drop-off site, I know there was a couple glitches again the last few weeks or a month ago, but it seemed like it just, just taken care of, something like that, the trees and branches, somebody used it.
Oh, now the yard waste site.
Yard waste site, yeah. That's open now again, and it's getting into, it's going to be used a lot again, I'm sure. So that's still working real well as far as the monitoring and people have been.
There's been one, one citation with improper dumping, yet remind the public, two things remind the public, is that the site is monitored, and secondly, please, please, please take a few minutes and read the signs. Just take a few minutes, read the signs as to what goes where and what's allowed and not allowed. It's pretty straightforward, limbs, branches less than four inches in brush, and then grass clippings and leaves, well marked, so it's all, all gone well, and it is, it is open. Other comments or questions?
Um, my report, for the last half hour, I've been mayor. I'm just happy that the word pool keeps coming up, and there's water going to be in it. I want to be the guy that doesn't put water in the pool. That would be a pretty short term for this guy, so thank you to HMU and city and people that are working on that, because we all know that's a project that's near and dear to our hearts, so. I don't really have anything else to talk about. I would open it up to HMU, Ken Weber, are you on the line?
I don't think he was able to join up and correspondence with him earlier, and he was unsure if his schedule may permit it today.
All right. Anybody in the public have anything they want to discuss tonight? Pretty quiet. Okay, I appreciate the easing me into this. I appreciate, this has been a great team, and that's one of the reasons I agreed to do this, I guess, is I know the team we have is lots of good people behind whoever sits in this chair, so. But that, I will adjourn the meeting.
Good job.
Job, Jake.
Survived.
Survived.
One down.
Yep, one down.
Six, six oh one, James.